September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two Village Board Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call, please.
McLaafferty.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Snogowski.
Here.
Stapleton.
Here.
Kittredge.
Here.
Maher.
Here.
Okay, thanks Janet. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda that consists of the following. We have approval of minutes for the Village Board Meeting, September twelfth. We have approval of dispersments, September thirteenth through September twenty-sixth. We have Resolution R dash fifty-eight dash twenty-two, reducing the letter of credit for the Villas of Equestrian Meadows. We have Resolution R dash fifty-nine dash twenty-two, approving the proposal from Artistic Holiday Designs. We have Resolution R dash sixty dash twenty-two, authorizing the approval of property license agreement with Route eighty-three properties. The second LLC located at thirteen zero one-one Grant Road. Need a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee McLaafferty, seconded by trustee Shaughnessy. George, anything to add on these?
Nothing to add.
Any questions or comments by the trustees? A roll call, please.
Yes, McLaafferty.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Snogowski.
Yes.
Stapleton.
Yes.
Kittredge. Maher.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. All right, next up, we have the Mayor's Report, and I believe we have a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Go ahead, Darshana. The microphone's there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to present the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year end, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd be remiss if I did not mention Chris Smith. She was totally instrumental in making sure that this audit went smoothly, so want to thank her. But wanted to share some highlights from this year. The village completed several capital improvement projects and replaced water mains. Also contributed five hundred thousand additional to the police pension fund. With all of that, we increased our general fund balance by one point three million and our net position by six point eight million. The audit went smoothly, as far as I know. It was smooth. Baker Tilly, Joe Lightcap is the director on this engagement. He and his staff reviewed our internal control procedures and all our audit work papers. And he's here today to present the audit.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Darshana. Yeah, the audit does go very smoothly. We, you know, we ask a lot of questions. We're here looking for a lot of support, a lot of documentation, and it comes quick and it's thorough. And everything that we asked for, we've received. So it's a great process from our perspective, for sure. There's two reports that'll be going over at a very high level tonight. The annual comprehensive financial report, as well as the audit results letter, the reporting and insights letter from the two thousand and twenty-two audit. So again, very high level. If you had a chance to look at the reports and you want to, you have any questions, feel free to ask me or, you know, stop me at any time. Once again, the village has issued a comprehensive annual financial report. Actually, they changed the name this year to annual comprehensive financial report to make the acronym a little less offensive to certain people. So you'll see the name of the report's changed just a little bit. But nonetheless, the report is comprehensive and has additional information than what is required by accounting standards. So the village goes a little bit further in their reporting in transparency to provide additional information in the beginning of the report, in the introductory section, a little bit more information about how the village operates, as well as the statistical information in the back that has ten-year trend information, so you can kind of see how the village has performed over time. We've again issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the village's financial statements. The highest level of assurance you can get from your outside auditors and states that the information within is reasonable in all material respects and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user of the financial statements. The opinion did, there were no new accounting pronouncements adopted this year. So if you were to hold up the report to the prior year, it would look consistent in form. There were, however, some additional auditing standards that were adopted this year. Didn't change too much from our perspective and what we did. But the opinion, if you were to look at the opinion compared to the prior year, you would see that our opinion is now kind of the front of the letter. It used to be kind of buried in the middle, now it's right at the first two paragraphs state that our opinion was unmodified. As well as some additional information on management's responsibility for going concern to assure that the village will continue in operations after twelve months of the fiscal year end, as well as some additional information around auditor's responsibilities. So there's a little bit more information in the opinion this year for you to see kind of a little bit more about the audit process. And one part of the report I always like to point out is management's discussion and analysis, beginning on page four. You don't have to go there now, but it's a great read for, from management's perspective, on how the village did on your financial results in comparison to the prior year. So it's written by management and it's a much easier read than the rest of the financial statements with the numbers and the notes to the financial statements that can get very detailed and you can get bogged down in there. But the M D N A does provide a good, high-level overview. One more thing, Darshana did talk about some of the financial results. Within those financial results, the village, there's about one point two million dollars in ARPA funds that aren't included in fund balance. They were received but not spent, so they don't show up in fund balance, they're unearned revenue. It's a big number from the prior year, but just so you're aware, it's not a part of the fund balance increase. And with the additional contribution to the police pension, the fund only lost about eight hundred thousand dollars compared from the prior year. I say that because, you know, market returns in January through April were not good and continuing after year-end, so that extra contribution did help the fund maintain better than your peers, probably, in about a negative six point two eight percent return, which is about what we've seen in the market, in your peers. So it's obviously not what you want to see, but, you know, it's still good results compared to, you know, to what it could be. And, you know, extra funding will definitely help with the pension liability. So all in all, a good opinion on the financial statements. If there's any questions on the financial numbers, now we can take those or also move to the non-financial highlights.
Any questions, comments? Joe, no, I mean, we're just satisfied to hear that everything went smooth and as usual. And appreciate Darshana, your assistance, as well as Chris. I'm sure, you know, Chris was kind of leading the way with you through most of it. So great to hear that things continue to go smooth and we're as responsive as can be.
And that's the other letter, the reporting and insights letter, that's pretty much what that says, too. From, you know, your audit of financial statements are those are your numbers. This is our report on how our audit went, pretty much boilerplate letter. There were no disagreements during the audit. There were no material adjustments and things like that that would be outlined in the report, should they exist. But you have a pretty much boilerplate, clean letter there, too. Darshana did mention internal controls that we come in and look at to plan the nature, timing, and extent of our audit procedures. We don't provide an opinion on internal controls, but if something were to come to our attention that we felt the board should know about, it would be in that letter. Again, there were no comments to report to the board. So again, a clean, a clean report. And lastly, on the reporting and insights letter, on page two, you'll have my contact information. We ultimately work for the board. While we work with Darshana and our team to perform the audit, we do work for the board. Should you have any questions or concerns throughout the year, you have my contact information. You can reach out to me and we can help talk through anything or if there's anything we need to look at during the audit, we can do that.
Joe, just one comment. So the general fund balance went up again. I know from a cash standpoint, you know, we've implemented some guidelines so that it doesn't go too high, so that we're not, again, we want a good enough cushion there in times of need. But then again, if you just have cash sitting on the balance sheet, that's not a good use of taxpayer monies. And, you know, as we all well know, there's enough, you know, projects to go around that are of necessity. So just curious what you're seeing across other municipalities? You know, as far as what's a proper balance or, you know, kind of where do you see us right now?
Normally, I see somewhere around thirty-five percent being kind of the fund balance and reserves of expenditures. It's kind of a guideline. A lot of, I would say with kind of COVID restrictions easing and, you know, income taxes and sales taxes are going up. I think, and communities are still being fiscally conservative with their spending. I think, you know, fund balances have gone up a little bit from what I've seen. So I think you're consistent with the other audits we've done in the other municipalities that we've been in.
Awesome. Do you see other municipalities making the additional contributions to, you know, their unfunded liabilities?
Some are, but it's not, it's not that common. It's a great debate that you can have amongst your peers on how to fund it and when to fund it. And I think there's just different viewpoints in that regard. I'm more conservative in nature, so I, you know, the more funding, the better, but that's.
Got it, got it. All right. Any other questions, comments?
No, and to that point, this is kind of the unofficial kickoff to next year's budget. So next month, we're going to have tax levy discussions, which will include the actuarial report for the police pension. We'll talk about that contribution. There's also migration, right chief, of all the funding locally to the state level. We'll talk about that a little bit, what that means for our fund. But that'll be at the October committee, the whole, we will get into police pension.
All right, it's always a fun topic. I always enjoy that.
Isn't it surprising, though, that as our fund balances go up, our returns go down? Luckily, Jen, we've got enough to put in the extra to keep it in balance.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. Stock market has not been our friend this year, so. All right. Well, thank you, Joe, and thank you very much, Darshana. Great job by you and your team again. All right. So we're going to wrap up with the mayor's mention. Just remind everyone, we do not have a Village Board Meeting on October tenth due to Columbus Day. There are a number of events taking place throughout the entire month, however. Specifically, our La Monster Days. So some do require pre-registration and they do fill up quick, so we encourage you to visit our dedicated webpage at lamondsterdays.com for detailed event information. Throughout the month, LaMont Public Library hosts a Hello Read Challenge for all ages. Hope and Friendship Foundation is doing a special Treat or Treat food collection for the food pantries. You can find the much-needed items list and drop-off locations on the website. We have the Zombie Apocalypse Laser Tag. It's available every Friday through Sunday during October at The Forge. Also, sign up to enter the La Monster Manor Home Decorating Contest, which is sponsored by the LaMont Park District. You can also vote for your favorite scarecrow through October seventeenth from the Trail of Scarecrows competition at the LaMont Township Community Center. The LaMont Park District is hosting a Halloween Blood Drive on Saturday, October first. The LaMont Fire District will hold an open house at the fire station, fire station number one, which is on New Avenue, that will take place on Saturday, October first. Our Halloween Annual Hoedown is on October twenty-second. And Trick or Treating in the Village is from three P M. to six thirty P M. on Halloween. And of course, that is October thirty-first. So again, Trick or Treating, three P M. to six thirty P M. Again, we have so much more going on during the month, so please visit the dedicated website at lamondsterdays.com. Also, we had three ribbon cuttings this past week. The first one was at two twenty-three Main Events, which opened during the pandemic. They are located next to Nick's Tavern. If you are in need of an event venue, please check them out as they go out of their way to make sure your event goes perfect. Also, we had Spare Farms right across the street, located at two twenty-eight Main. They sell healthy microgreens for both consumers and restaurants to add to meals, smoothies, and much more. They are located, again, right across the street from Nick's, and they are open to the public on Tuesdays and Thursdays from eleven A M. to five P M. And then lastly, Max Physical Therapy and Performance opened up on one eighty-two East Wind Street, which is right behind McDonald's. With their staff of a culmination of well over twenty years of outpatient orthopedics and a focus on providing the most and highest standards for their patients, they are another great addition to our town, so check them out if you need some physical therapy. And again, as a reminder, if you have not reviewed, or viewed, I should say, our two thousand and twenty-two State of the Village address, it is available on our Village LaMont YouTube page. I encourage you to watch it as it contains a significant amount of information, and we've kept it under twenty minutes again, so you could check out what's going on around downtown and all the good stuff coming up. All right, with that being said, that is it for our mayor's mention. Next up, we have the Clerk's Report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance O dash forty-four dash twenty-two, authorizing a redevelopment and economic incentive agreement between the Village of LaMont and Marbella of LaMont LLC for Marbella of LaMont.
Okay, need a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee McLaafferty. George, want to take this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marbella of LaMont LLC, the owner of the property at two twenty-five Canal Street, which is the previous site of the Peterson Hardware Development or Building, is seeking a redevelopment agreement for a thirty million dollar-plus private investment into the downtown, which will include commercial first floor, residential apartments, and it'll also include open space, parking, and other related civic space. This is the next step in the process for this development. It was preliminary, preliminarily approved, preliminary planning unit development back on June twenty-seventh by the Village Board. This is the next step for the developer to finalize different agreements with their bank. They have financing so the project can move forward. After tonight, if approved, the next step will be final P U D., which is expected in October, or later this year, October or early November. And that'll be just final provisions of the planning unit development to ensure that they're in compliance with what you guys approved from a preliminary standpoint, the landscape plan. So that will come after this step. In addition to a land exchange agreement, as we've talked about at previous meetings, the village is going to be a net gainer of about half an acre of land in the downtown. And that's in addition to another quarter of an acre in which the developer was able to donate to the village for the parking area south of Canal Street earlier in the year. In terms of the redevelopment agreement and incentives, you know, one tool the village does have to its capacity is TIF. The property is located in the newly created I N M Canal TIF, which was created back in two thousand and twenty. So that has another twenty years of increment producing ability plus. You know, and then the village has an internal policy of up to twenty percent of investment can be reimbursed as pay-as-you-go format, which means revenue that's generated from the development itself can be utilized to reimburse back to the developer to pay for TIF-eligible costs. That's part of the agreement as well, that any rebate for the project must be vetted through our attorneys, and they've worked on these agreements, Mike and our TIF attorney, Vince Kankar, as well. They've been working with the developer's attorney to finalize that list. But any cost reimbursed to the developer must be TIF-eligible, and it is capped at those TIF-eligible dollars and ultimately capped at our internal policy, which we've used for other developments. In addition to the development, which we've talked about, or the private development, this development will also yield a public green space and parking associated to it on the western side of the property. So we're definitely interested in continuing to plan for that in conjunction with the developer. The developer will be responsible for all costs associated with improving the park, parking lot area, and all the other public improvements, and the village will contribute towards those improvements similar to what occurred south of Canal Street with the parking area. The village was donated the land for free, and then the village ended up paying for the costs associated with building out the parking lot. The only difference is, is that the village has a cap dollar figure in just preliminary cost. It'll probably go over our contribution and it can't go under, if that makes sense. We will be requiring invoices along the way to ensure reimbursement of those dollars are correct. And, you know, just to kind of address any other issues, I'll kind of open it up to the board. But again, I know Mike's on Zoom and our TIF attorney and Mike, they've done a good job looking through this agreement. I think it's a fair agreement for both sides. It ensures the project moves forward and the village will be able to reimburse only what's developed from the site in terms of revenues. So, Mike, do you have anything to add before I turn it over to the mayor?
George, I think you summarized it very well. As you said, we've worked very long on this. We discussed this with the trustees and mayor, and it's been a work in progress, but I think that it's a good process.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions or comments by the trustees?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
For the eight hundred thousand, George, I see on here it says that we will be submitting invoices.
Correct.
Right? So how does that work with the payment, then? So there's a payment on final P U D. of one hundred seventy-five thousand, but there's going to be no expenses associated with, at that point, based off of the, or the?
Yeah, it's a good, that's a good question, and that's what was negotiated between the two sides. And the timetable for payment was more so to ensure the project itself moves forward. So while everything has to be vetted through invoices, that is the first payment that will go out to the developer, which was negotiated between the two sides.
So I guess what I don't understand is with the, if we set up to one hundred seventy-five based off of invoices, it'd be one thing, but in here, it's determined, it seems like it's based off of development of their building, not necessarily the public improvements. So I don't, it doesn't seem like we're tying it, you know what I mean? We're not tying the payments to them to any invoices that we're getting back from the developer for the costs associated with those payments. So I think that's a risk for us, because we're just essentially giving them the money. Even though we say in here it's based on invoices, we're not requiring them to submit invoices. We're just, we're going to make the payment no matter what.
We're not paying the invoices, though. We're paying based on the invoices.
We're not, though. That's what I'm saying. This schedule doesn't have us paying based on invoices, it's paying based on.
Paying in advance.
It's paying in advance.
That's correct, but we're not paying the invoices. They're there to justify the payment.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, is we're making payments.
You're trying to tie the payment to the invoice, and I'm telling you, that's not what it says.
But even at the end, we haven't tied anything to invoices.
No, you've tied it to the completed work, completed work.
But, right, but if this project is under, let's just say for fun, it's under the seven, eight hundred thousand, we still pay the eight hundred thousand, because we're not tying it to any invoices.
Okay, I understand your question now, Dave.
So I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that.
Right, there's no, there's no.
I didn't go through all three hundred and twenty-eight pages.
Part of it is the land swap, that's correct.
Yeah, and.
They've posted a performance, an eight hundred thousand performance bond, too.
And we've, and we've, you know, I think if it comes in under the seven hundred thousand, I'll, you know, I would guess it's not going to. We have estimates of work of over eight hundred thousand from back in May, numbers keep going up. What we intend to negotiate is a cap for the village so that we're not subject to cost two years from now when the park may or, or next year when the park gets built. So I understand your question, it was just, that's how it was negotiated, Dave, and understand if that's an issue. But, you know, we're also getting a prepayment of our building permit fee upfront of a hundred thousand. So it is a little bit, you know, we discussed during these meetings whether why put in a hundred grand here, take a hundred grand here, and then pay a hundred grand. But that's just how the agreement, the attorney's recommended. So we will be getting a hundred grand upfront for the building permit fee without reviews and inspections. So they're prepaying that, we're prepaying this. I think the goal is to get the project going and bring a boom to the downtown.
Yeah, I think to that point, I mean, this is a thirty million dollar building. This is a builder that has a track record, has done an excellent job, did an excellent job with St. James', has delivered on the parking lots, making them publicly available, i.e. we've also traded TIF monies for that again. We always have an individual that always comes in here that doesn't understand TIFs. But TIF is any increment above what is created. This is going to be a thirty million dollar building. It could be upwards of two hundred to three hundred in tax, in a tax bill. This was a building that was pretty much dilapidated. It was beloved but dilapidated, and I think the fire department told us years ago that if there's a fire, they weren't going in there. And we've gone through seven to eight builders on this, and we've, I think, have done an incredible job as far as trying to get the best builder to the site. And again, I just, from a materiality standpoint, I'm not going to sneeze at a hundred thousand dollars, but a hundred thousand dollars, there's a lot of moving parts in this, but this is a thirty million dollar project. So I don't, you know, you got to keep that in mind when you're, you got to look at the full picture and not just break it out into specific bullet points. I get what you're saying, Dave, but, you know, I, you know, these guys are committed, and this is something that's going to add a lot of value to the downtown. And I think, you know, I was just out there today walking around, and I saw a minimum ten to twelve people just walking their dogs, just checking out what's going on. And all I heard was very, you know, this is, this is very exciting. This is something that's going to add value, and it's going to, it's basically. going to add value, and it's gonna, it's basically going to raise the entire bar of our downtown. It's going to raise the, the value, it's going to raise potentially, you know, professionals, whatever it may be, you know, more, more quality coming into the downtown, more support for our businesses. So, again, I, I think it's a very exciting thing, and, you know, as far as the timing of it, all I could say is just, you know, go out there, and, and I know they're, they're staying within what they're allowed to do under an acre, but I think this redevelopment agreement gets them moving on their financing, which is their last step in order to get this done. I think there's over, you know, there's probably been, I, I think I'm not exaggerating here, George, probably thousands and thousands of hours spent on this by staff, by, you know, board members, by outside consultants. We've even had our local, you know, John Kern and, and, you know, Jim Durkin and Larry Walsh, and, you know, we've had many, many hurdles that we've gone through, and I appreciate everyone's help on this. This has not, you know, been an easy thing, and, you know, it's been going on for five or six years, but I think this is, you know, is there such thing as a perfect project? No, but to me, this is about as good as we can get. I think this is going to be a phenomenal project, and, and I'm very excited about it. So, I know Rick, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I think, I, I just want to go back to Dave's question on 3.10. There are specifics here in that section on triggers for the payments, so I'm just trying to understand what it is you want more than what this says, because it, it has each trigger. So the 175, A is paid on the final plan unit development approval, B, 175 on the open, upon the building being on the roof, C, 175 upon completion of paving and construction, D, 140. This adds up to the full amount.
Agreed.
So what, what specifically are you getting at, Dave?
There's, the triggers aren't based off of the work that needs to be done where the money's being spent. These triggers are based on, these, these triggers are, are based on essentially the billing. So all I was asking for is tying the costs associated to the triggers. So in here, of the 800,000, it's not 100, it's 800,000, I'm looking to tie essentially the cost of the triggers. That, that's what I was asking.
Okay, because also the, to the mayor's point about the 100,000, it does say in the, in the preamble here, which takes into account the, the consideration of the developer's contribution of 100,000, which is upfront also.
For the park fees, and then we pay 175 on approval.
But, but all these numbers add up to the maximum of the 800?
I agree.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we're not tying it to actual costs, though. We're tying it, it says, it says we're tying it to actual costs, right, because we're asking for invoices, but our payment schedule isn't based on actual costs. Our payment schedule is based off of project completion, irrelevant of the cost. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
We don't need to, we don't have to go in and...
I don't quite agree with...
We're not going to adjust it, it's fine.
Yep. I don't agree with your assessment of that, but I hear you. I, I understand your question.
And we are getting a land swap in there, so that land also kind of ties into the...
But the land swap isn't part of this. The, the problem with the land swap, the struggle that I have on the land swap is, we're getting a half an acre, a three quarters of an acre of land, but they're going to develop a private driveway on that land, and we're, they're going to use some of it for permit parking. So to me, the land swaps, well, they are, we, we...
Some, a portion of it.
Yeah, I'm not saying the whole thing, and then there's a park. So the land swap isn't just for us for the park, the, the land that we're taking over is going to be partially for a private drive for, for their use. So I don't know why the Village...
They just built a parking lot, though, a year ago.
It's not for the parking lot. I mean, we don't have PUD, final PUD, so we don't know exactly how it's going to look, right?
But the mayor's talking south of Canal Street.
They built a parking lot a year ago.
So that's the $230,000 donation.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about...
But that's part of, that you should, though.
I'm talking about...
That's a swap, they built it a year ago, they basically gave it to us for a year on...
But I don't have a problem with that.
No, I know, but that's what you have to factor in.
Just ask you to take into consideration...
You're trying to, you, you, I mean, you're, you're trying to, you gotta look at the whole, you know, puzzle, not with just one piece. I get the piece that you're explaining.
I'm, what I'm trying to do is bring up my list, right, so I'm going through the list that I have. This is one of the things on my list. I could say all the things on my list if you want, and then we can go back. My thing on the list, on the, the current land swap that we're talking about, which that land that they gave us had nothing to do with the land swap. The land swap we're talking about is the canal land for this .75 acres, right?
No, I think the, so you're, you're saying the south parking lot has nothing to do with this whole project?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm, we're talking about the land swap. So the land swap, which is the canal property, right? George, right? The canal property, we're swapping the canal property for the .75 acres, which is west of the hole, right?
Larger, larger than the canal, by two times, yes.
Which is, I, I, I agree, it's point, point, I don't have a debate, I, my, my point is, I'm not debating the land swap. What I'm debating is taking possession of the land that they're using. That's all I, all, my, that was my, my other feedback is, the land swap is the west, the west land west of, of the building, and it's .7 acres. Roughly, right, because we don't have a final PUD, but what I heard in our meeting was roughly .25 of those acres is going to be a private drive for the building and somewhat of a parking for essentially that we're going to be giving back to the building, right?
We're not giving back the parking. It'll be permitted for...
It's going to be permitted for, only for use of the building. So essentially, it's for building use only, right? For residents of the building.
It, it isn't a private drive, though, is it? It's a public drive.
The drive that's going to go around, that's going to go in front of the building?
It's going to be public drive, and...
It's going to feed business, it's going to feed other public parking, so, I get your point, but, you know, in the tying, that was just the way the deal was negotiated, it was meant to see the project move forward. If you look at it from, from Rick's standpoint, you know, they're giving 100 upfront, they're giving building permit fees, so we could, you know, I think we just got to look at this thing, as the mayor mentioned, as a whole, is it, is it better moving forward as, as constructed in the document? Staff's recommendation, legal is, is yes.
Okay. And my last, my last thing that I want to bring up, because this is for my vote as well, so it's publicly out there, is I, I still don't see a resolution on the parking that satisfies me, my satisfaction of getting 100 spots out there for them. So I just want to make sure I point that out.
All right.
That, that, those are the impacts from my vote.
And just, I want to go on record as far as that, the park itself. I'd rather not see more parking on there. I'd rather see the park be larger rather than smaller. I agree we need more parking in the downtown areas, and I think we, we're, we're working on that, but I'd hate to see this park be cut up. We have enough blacktop down in that part of town, so I'd rather, I like, I agree we need more parking, but I'd hate to see it being used up or it been, eaten, been taken out of that park. I think that park should be bigger and not smaller.
Keep it the great line, not the good line.
Not the good enough one? No, well, and those, those discussions is, that's why I didn't want to get bogged down in parking, and you, is that we're going to, we're going to be discussing that at final PUD. We know the land being donated, we'll have a park component, a significant park component, a portion of it, very small, will be parking, and we're also going to be utilizing adjacent parking lots as part of that analysis. So we're going to continue those conversations, and again, this is nothing, nothing new. We've talked about the downtown parking and civic space for a couple of years now on this development. This is just another step in the process, and we're looking forward to see it move forward.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think, big picture, it's, it's time to move on. I think, you know, whatever we encounter, we address it at that time. So, any other questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Yes, McClafferty?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Snogowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
No.
All right. Motion approved.
Resolution R-61-22, approving award of contract for 2022 sanitary sewer lining project.
Okay. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a, a motion by trustee Snogowski, seconded by trustee McClafferty. Ralph, are you taking this one, buddy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. This is a resolution for our 2022 sewer lining project. We'll be doing over 2,000 feet of sanitary sewer for this lining project. There were three bids submitted with the low bid coming in from National Power Rod Corporation at $89,353. That's $12,652 under the engineer's estimate. This project is going to be in the area of Kim, Kip, Cherokee, and Kipata. Those sewers are fairly old over there, so we want to get those lined and comply with our long-term control plan with IEPA and MWRD. So staff recommendation is to award the contract to National Power Rod Corporation for $89,353.
Thanks, Ralph. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snogowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
All right. Motion approved.
Next, Resolution R-62-22, authorizing the order and purchase of police vehicles.
Okay. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Shaughnessy, seconded by trustee McClafferty. Chief, are you taking this?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of our normal multi-year capital, equipment, and vehicle replacement plan, we typically request approval to replace a, a portion of our current fleet during the December capital budget discussions. Each year, the order deadline from Ford keeps getting pushed earlier and earlier. Last year, if you remember, we did this in November. This year, the deadline Ford implemented was September, and so what we're asking for is approval to allow us to place the order for the fiscal year, 24 capital fleet now in September. Those would still be delivered in fiscal year '24 in May and June of next year, you know, if they're actually go to, to build. So what we'd be, we'd be asking for this year, we obtained a, a order, a bid through Willowbrook Ford. The government pricing now is the same for, you know, dealers, suburban purchasing cooperative, and the state bid, they're all one, as part of one government pricing now from Ford. So we'd be asking approval to purchase, to place the order for the purchase of four SUV interceptors for a price not to exceed 155,000 minus the trade-in units, and to be able to do that now.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment about police vehicles in general, and I know the chief's aware of it, that years ago, there used to be competitors in the field, and now, basically, everybody other than Ford is withdrawn. So they have the corner on the market, and they sort of dictate the sales. It's hard for towns to deal with it on, on a budgetary basis as far as the timeline, so I, I certainly understand, you know, at least committing to, you know, an order is, is the proper thing to do.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, roll call, please.
Yes, McClafferty?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Snogowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Maher?
Yes.
All right. Motion approved.
Resolution R-63-22, approving professional services agreement between HR Green, Inc. and the Village of Lamont for water and sewer rate study.
All right. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Kittredge, seconded by trustee Maher. Ralph, are you taking this, or George?
Darshauna, and then I'll jump in too, on some filler. Ralph, Ralph, just make sure it runs properly, right? What it costs is...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, we had, the board had considered certain water source options, and in, during that process, staff had done an analysis of the cost of water and related expenditures. And the analysis revealed that, you know, the October 3% increases that we do is not sufficient to cover our existing costs and definitely doesn't cover our future operating and capital expenditure costs. Just one highlight was, there were, at the larger capital expenditure project, there were two big wells that were required in years 2030 and 2040, so that significantly increases our capital expenditure in the future. Also, the Village is applying for a Lake Michigan water allocation permit, and one of the conditions for that permit is that we should have, we should promote water conservation. So currently, our water structure, the water rate structure that we have is a little different, it's a little, quite unique, actually, and it doesn't promote water conservation, so we have to redefine our water rate structure. So staff is recommending the board approve the HR Green proposal that's included here. What they're going to do is they're going to assimilate all the operating costs, current operating costs, capital expenditure costs, existing debt obligations, and future operating and capital expenditure costs. They're also going to compare with, I think it's 10 communities in the region. What they're going to do is, they're going to take this analysis, and they're going to give us three water rate structures for four different water source alternatives that we have. So I think one is the existing water system, one, the second one is the Joliet Water Regional Commission, if we went with them, the Illinois American Water, yeah, if we went with Illinois American Water, there were two different options over there for that water source. So they're going to give us three rate structures for each of these alternatives, which is 12 of them. The cost is 43,000, and one of the ways we can reduce that is by considering just one water source option and get three different water rates. Those, if, if we agree on the water rate structure, then we can apply to the remaining three water source options or alternatives. I know it's a little confusing, but...
Yeah, no, thanks, Darshauna, just real quick, and, and I know you mentioned it, but regardless of the option, and we went through a whole analysis last year, we were put up under a time, timeline from the City of Joliet and their consortium, and we respected their timeframe, we went through the process, but regardless of option, whether it be Lake Michigan, from either option that we evaluated, or if we stay with our system, we're in a very good position, we don't have water issues that other towns do, so we may continue with our system, you know, forever, potentially 10, 20, 30, 40 years, but regardless of the option, we knew we'd have to do this analysis to ensure we have the capital dollars for the future, because regardless of option, we're going to have capital needs in the future that are unique to each option, if that makes sense. And, and the Lake Michigan, you know, the DNR, we had another call with them the other day, we're almost ready for our, our real hearing, we went, we had three or four pre-hearings, and they've been pretty, pretty solid in recommending that we, we need to migrate to a new structure. So this, HR Green, who's been with us the entire way, will use a lot of the data and information that we've already compiled, package it together, they'll, they'll partner with an auditing firm, right, Darshauna, and then they'll, they'll compare our rate, current and future potential structures with current rates for other towns. So I think it'll be a good project. We hope to do it over the next three or four months, and we hope to have meetings January, February, and to present to the board.
So, just so I understand, we're going to be looking at other towns besides the Chicago water rates, obviously, most towns are on Chicago water rates, but this will factor in not only the water, but the sewer as well, because a lot of these bills are tied together, and, and you can't look at them unless you look at them together, right, Ralph?
Correct.
And, you know, we always say, hey, we got some of the lowest rates around. I think this study will kind of put pen, pen to paper on it, at least from an official standpoint, so that we can talk to, you know, our residents, and, I mean, let's face it, I mean, inflation is, you know, running high, you know, five, six, seven, as high as 8%. Costs are not going down, no one likes rates going up, but it's, you know, tapping in across the board, so...
From, from what I saw in there, there are two, I think it's worth pointing out, there's two major factors in there in our structure. The one of the lack of conservation is that we have a flat rate on the first 4,000 gallons, so there's no disincentive not to use 4,000 gallons. You can go turn your faucet on, let it run until you run 4,000 gallons out, there's no disincentive. So that is what we're up against with the, what is it, what's the acronym, ID?
IDNR.
IDNR, or whatever it is, whatever they call themselves this week, but, so we're up against that in, in, just in policy, because what they want is some structure to bring about disincentive for use. So what it will mean is proportionally a change for the 4,000 gallons to be charged charged at some incremental rate so that as you use more, you pay more. You're not guaranteed four thousand for a flat rate. So that's, I think that's a, that's a major change from how we've done things in the past. And the second one is that we have almost twenty percent senior citizens within the community based on the latest census. We discount our rate at fifty percent for the seniors. So that needs to be considered. How it needs to be considered will be a matter of what the report bring back, brings back and what we, we decide and discuss with constituents of how we're going to handle it. Obviously, you could raise everyone's rate and still discount seniors at fifty percent. That'd be one way to maintain a fifty percent discount, if in fact, that's what we want to do. But, but that's the other big discussion. As it was pointed out in this initial report, anyway, those are two major factors, because twenty percent of our income is discounted at fifty percent off of our overall charge.
That's a good point. So I, I would make sure in the study that we take a look at senior rates and also we had, I think, an inquiry as well for, I guess, people on social, social security, people that are disability.
SSI.
Yeah. And we should take a look at that as well. You know, our other towns giving discounts based on, you know, for, you know, disabilities.
Another point, Mr. Mayor, was on our last call with IDNR, they, they want to know that you're going to be investing in the future in your water system. They want the water mains to be newer compared to the old, right George?
Yep.
They, they want, they want to know your capital improvement projects, you know, going forward. So we've got to fund that, and that's part of this as well.
Well, yeah, and those are coming from some of our neighbors who are having major problems with leakage that they can't get ahead of, which is causing problems. But it also happens to be problems that were with publicly traded companies who didn't reinvest the amounts they were supposed to put in, based on the rates they were charging. That's what's bringing all those things to the forefront. So basically, bottom line, what I always like to say is do what you say you're going to do. If everybody did that, there wouldn't be a problem and we wouldn't be having this discussion. But nobody does it, so there's a problem.
All right.
It's going to be a fun project.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Roll call, please, Janet.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snogowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge? Maher?
Yes.
All right. Motion approved. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, village attorney report. Mike, do you have anything for us?
Other than Marbella, I, I think that kept us very busy this month. I have no further report.
Thank you.
George, administrator report.
Nothing for open session. Thank you.
Okay. Any board reports?
Mayor, I have one, one, I don't know if it's a board, it's not really reported, it just comes forward from our discussions tonight, so it's more of a new business item, I believe. But I think we need to consider in the future, changing our overall policy evaluations for budgeting of vehicles and equipment. It's become a standard procedure for all of these types of assets to be ordered way more in advance than they used to be. So rather than coming to these meetings and saying, oh, we've got to place an order, a special order because we now have to order sooner, it's becoming standard policy. So we should change our policy to meet what is standard so that we're not excusing why we're doing it. Ralph, I know you had the same problem ordering equipment. We've got the same problem every time, we have to order vehicles now. I just know from my past history, the company I worked for, they have to order vehicles at least six months in advance of what used to be done. And that changes constantly, especially now with the talks of, you know, getting rid of conventional fueled equipment and going to more electric equipment. That's a whole nother issue that's taking place. So anyway, I just think we ought to, we ought to change our policy when we budget for assets to an earlier cycle, whatever that might be. If it's eighteen months, then I, I don't know exact, I don't remember exactly where we were, but typically, we were doing it six months approximately later than we have to now, maybe even more. So we need to nail that down, find out from these guys, what is a good date, and make that our policy.
The deadline for the pickup trucks for Public Works hasn't come yet, but it's got to be coming really soon.
And they're just shutting them off, period.
All right. Duly noted. Okay. Next up, do we have any staff reports? Chief, Ralph?
Just one really quick one. October third, which is next Monday, we have our MFT road resurfacing project starting, and that'll be over in Schultz, Crook, Thomas chest area, here in a sec. So just drive slowly through there.
Thanks, Ralph.
I have a couple, couple of things. October one begins the hunting season in Illinois and residents start, they hear hunters in the areas, especially the unincorporated areas surrounding the village. And we frequently get calls of shots being fired that turn out to be legal hunting, not all the time, but most of the time. Hunting is permitted in unincorporated areas of Cookville and DuPage with the permission of the landowners. They, they do have some restrictions, like, you know, proximity to a residential area, but they do allow it. But no hunting of firearms is permitted within the limits of the, the Village of Lamont. I also want to do a quick shout out to Jerry Limaker from the Building Department. Jerry participated this weekend in the five-oh race in Morris, and that's a Special Olympics fundraiser. There were thirty-one towns that participated this weekend, and he raised just over nine thousand dollars for Special Olympics, which was more than we raised during the cop and top. So this is combined, it'll be combined with the Village of Lamont contribution to Special Olympics. Also added, Officer Joe Kazawa did the polar plunge a, last year, and so we'll have over twenty thousand dollars that we contributed. But Jerry, Jerry finished first in the, the B race, and then in the A race, he finished six out of thirty-one cars. So good job, Jerry. Jerry does this on his own time with, with his own dollar that he spends, you know, on buying this car and, and all the prep that he does with this car. So we appreciate Jerry doing this. I think he's done it now for five or six years.
Awesome.
The last thing I had, I did want to mention, we did have the theft crews in town last week. They, they were alerted, our officers were alerted to them on the LPR that they came in on Oak Tree and Archer Avenue, and were able to find them before they got into any of the neighborhoods and chased them out of, out of town. They typically run, like we've mentioned before, every time they're attempted to be stopped, and we have the no pursuit policy. But, you know, bottom line is they didn't steal from anybody in town. And I know it, it gets corny when we talk about the target hardening, but, you know, please continue to lock your vehicles, don't put keys in your vehicles, or keep your garage door open. That target hardening is effective. You know, last month, we had some different types of crews in town that were breaking into the drive-throughs of a couple of our fast food restaurants. And because we had talked to them in years past about placing one-way safes and, and keeping their money in those that were theft-proof, they didn't lose any substantial amount of, of money. And my guess is those crews will not be back in town. So it's, it is effective if, if we do target harden. But I think those LPRs are paying off. We've had a couple incidents where we've been able to chase them out of town, and I continue to see, you know, every, every night, they, they're hitting suburbs up, up and down the expressway chain. So they haven't been here for a while, and hopefully after the other night, they'll stay out of town.
Hey, chief, can, can you just give a quick explanation of, of what the LPRs, how many we have, what they do, and how do they alert us?
So right now, we have sixteen cameras, and they're, they're essentially set up on the Egress routes in and out of town, on the exterior of, of the town. The, the concept when they were put in, they're, they're a camera that just records into a, a database license plates. So that, you know, the, the concept was if we had a crime committed in town, we would have that leads generating information about everybody who left our, our village. So we have sixteen cameras now. We, we actually have twenty cameras. We have two locations that we haven't been able to find a solution to get them installed, and that's up on one hundred and thirty-fifth and Archer, and on Archer and, or Main Street and eighty-three. We have cameras for those locations, but we just don't have a, a place to put them yet because of the, the limitations, and we've been battling iDOT with the ability to put it on their poles for a couple of years now. So those, those cameras just record those license plates, they put into a database, and then there are some proactive features that we can put in there that they will alert our vehicles through their MDTs if certain things, you know, are, come past those locations. So you can do as much, you know, suspended drivers and stolen license plates. And because of the frequency of those alerts, we've pretty much restricted them in the evenings to stolen license, stolen cars that come into town so that we know if a stolen car is in town, it's likely coming in with a theft crew, and we can then move our people to try to find them and, and then react. We don't have them set up right now internally or in, you know, internal inside the, the village limits, but I think that's probably the next step.
Awesome. So just to reiterate, this was a stolen car that was being driven early morning. It was reported as stolen from another municipality, and it, we were alerted through our LPR system because we took a picture of that, and that's kind of cool to hear that it happened in real time. So a car was stolen potentially hours before, and we were able to at least be notified, and again, we can't chase them, but we can at least make sure they are safely out of town.
Yeah, and our, our unit attempted to curb them, picked them up in the area of Eagle Crest and Hundred Twenty-seventh Street and attempted to stop them.
Awesome. All right. Thanks, chief.
It was one of our brand new, our newest officer, that was just out of the academy, by the way.
Oh, wow.
To piggyback a little bit on what the chief says, you know, policing, and I'm sure the chief will agree with this, has changed so much in the last three, four years, couple of years. And how do the police sort of maintain some aggressive posture? And I wasn't here when the village bought those LPRs, but obviously, that was a great decision and is paying dividends. And so for what, when people think, you know, they see police officers writing tickets, that's only one small function of their job. And that, the technology now is driving law enforcement, and certainly here in Lamont. And so these, these LPRs are worth their weight in gold. And it's a classic example, in the middle of the night, when the villages sound asleep, that the officers are out there doing their job, and, and things do work out so that they're able to maybe not engage the, the people who come in here to commit crime, but to send a deterrent by more or less shuffling them out of town. When they get behind the, the bad guys, they understand that, hey, chances are, the department's not going to chase you, but they're certainly not going to go the other way and let you, you know, commit a crime. So outstanding work. And the LPRs, I can always say, hey, whenever that decision was made, it was a good one.
Actually, there was a heads up by the chief. We took advantage of the Homeland Security grant money. That's how he was able to come up with those. So it wasn't a planned budgetary move, it was just a heads up by staff. Thank you.
And those do come, do, I mean, I think it's something that I, we recommend, we put it in the budget, because there is some cost to those, right? Either it be, you know, maintenance or, or upgrade or memory, and also adding additional LPRs. I think we need to discuss that as well and, and put them in the budget. We can't do it all in one year, right Darshauna, but we can, you know, do it over time, you know, whatever it may be, one or two a year, or, you know, just so we can just build upon what we have and just make sure we have a budget for it.
Citgo and Motorola donated some cameras to us as well.
Awesome. All right. Thanks, chief. Any other staff reports? All right. Any new or unfinished business? All right. Audience participation, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received nothing prior to the meeting, and there's no one in the audience, so. Even, even Jerry doesn't love us anymore.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, George. Okay, moving on. We're going to go into executive session, so I'm going to need a motion to discuss under chapter five, ILCS of the Open Meetings Act. Real estate purchase or lease, one-twenty slash two C five. Real estate setting price for sale, one-twenty, two C six. Litigation pending or imminent, one-twenty, two C eleven. Need a motion, please? All right. Motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee Maher. Roll call, please.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snogowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Maher?
All right. Motion approved. George, any of these decisions, do we need to go back into public?
Nope, there'll be no action after.
Okay, so no action after executive session, so I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and wish everyone a great week. Thank you.
Thank you.